I'm calling this meeting of the Silver City Town Council to order. I would like to invite you to join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance to the indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Bob, Bob, can you, do you know what the source of that noise is?
I believe it's Mr. Reynolds.
It's a fan.
I'll turn off the fan.
Please, thank you.
I think he's joining us from the Boeing hangar in Seattle.
I was gonna say, because it keeps coming around. You can't hear it.
Okay, Ms. Mackey, would you do a roll call, please?
Sure. Mayor Ladner?
Mayor Ladner, present.
Counselor Beddison?
Counselor Beddison, present.
Counselor Amon Smith?
Counselor Amon Smith, present.
Counselor Ray?
Counselor Ray, present.
Counselor Kano?
Counselor Kano, present.
Alex Brown?
Present.
Ames Marshall?
Present.
Jim Reynolds?
Present.
Dave Portillo?
Present.
Lambert?
President.
Bob Higgins?
Present.
And myself, Ann Mackey.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is changes to the agenda. Does anyone want to make any changes to the agenda? Counselor Ray?
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to make a slight adjustment or a slight change to the agenda if possible. I would like to see public input where council comments are at and council comments on public input.
So if I understand you correctly, you want to move public input to right before council comments?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Is that a motion?
That's a motion, yes, sir.
Do I hear a second? I do not hear a second or I don't see any hands being raised. So that motion fails, Counselor Ray.
Okay.
Next on the agenda is council comments. First on the agenda is Counselor Ray.
Thank you, Mayor. I would just like to say that whatever the governor did in spending excess money, I think any politician that does that should be held accountable for it. They work, we work for the public. We do not work for ourselves. We are no better than anybody else. So if she's got something coming to her, let it be. And if not, then that's fine also. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Beddison?
Thank you, Mayor. I just have one comment. I want to thank everyone who has contacted me regarding the flag at 33rd and Swan, the debris piles that remain from the demolition of the old U-Haul location on the northwest corner of Silver Heights Boulevard, Hudson and Juniper, and the home demolition on 12th Street, west of Grant Street, on the east side of Silver Creek. Hopefully, I've got that right. I kept going back and forth on the location. My understanding is, as requested, that James Marshall will be addressing these issues under reports. But as per the flag, for those people who contacted me and those that have done it in various different ways to tell me, I would just like to say publicly, while I too find the flag offensive based on the profanity on the flag, and I am sympathetic to others who feel the same, this individual who is flying the flag has a First Amendment right to free speech that does not incite harm towards a person or a group. And so I know that Mr. Marshall is going to speak about that a bit further. And people who have contacted me or know me personally understand that I firmly believe that conducting oneself in a civil manner through civil discourse and engagement is a more formidable way to make a point and seems to be a lost art. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Counselor Amon Smith?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In that vein, I too want to recognize various citizenry who have complained. Everyone has complained who has contacted me about that flag that Counselor Beddison referenced. I just want to say publicly that if you ever went back and read Dante, who was a poet who wrote about the Inferno, the various circles of hell, there was an entire area that was reserved for what he called sowers of discord. And those were people who took delight in sowing anger, disruption, what might be called now triggering or sticking it to another group of people in order to get people's anger and resentment up. So I just want to say that such actions have been with us for hundreds and hundreds of years. And I agree with Counselor Beddison and many other counselors who've expressed that engagement and civil discourse respectful and rational is probably a much better way. And I just want to encourage everyone who is upset to take deep breaths and soothe their hearts. This kind of behavior has been with us forever. Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, other council members.
Thank you. Counselor Kano?
I have no comments this evening. Thank you, Mayor.
Any other council comments? Okay, moving right along. Approval of the minutes is Agenda Item Six, which is the approval of the minutes of the regular meeting on February 23rd, 2021. Do I hear a motion? Counselor Amon Smith?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to approve the minutes of the regular council meeting of the town of Silver City of February 23rd, 2021.
Thank you. Do I hear a second? Counselor Ray?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll second that as a rip.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Roll call, please, Ann?
Counselor Beddison?
Counselor Beddison, aye.
Counselor Amon Smith?
Counselor Amon Smith, aye.
Counselor Ray?
Aye.
Counselor Kano?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Next is reports. And I would just like to remind you that when it comes to developing agenda, if you know of a report that needs to be made, please call Ann Mackey. No, I'm not ready for that. I'm not ready for that. What?
You missed something on the agenda, Mr. Mayor. It's public input that's next.
Oh, yeah, right. Ann, will you do public input?
My apologies.
Yes, we received one email for public input dated February 25th. The subject is "Public Input for the March 9, 2021 Regular Council Meeting, Addressed to Me, Town Clerk Mackey." And I'll read it. "Would you please forward this email to our city councillors, Mayor, and City Manager Brown? I would like this public input to be read out loud and into the record. I am old school, believing in old city election ordinances. The old city election ordinance stated campaign signs, banners, or flags could go up 30 days before an election. All signs of campaigns were to be removed within seven days after the election was held. An ordinance no longer enforceable because our old city attorney said removing campaign material might infringe on our First Amendment rights. Every day, I drive by a, opening quotation, Buck Biden, close quotation, flag, below a self-described Confederate flag and a yard sign for Trump's 2020 campaign on the corner of Swan and 33rd Street. Can I put up my Biden signs again? Can I put up several hundred Biden signs and be held harmless? What if they were covered with offensive language, too? Doing nothing over offensive language fosters lower community standards, like having graffiti remain on private property until it, too, gets tagged by a rival gang. I would like the city to research this matter of the offensive language flying high across from the school right across Swan Street. I would like a response to my public input. Thank you for your time. Signed, Glenn Griffin."
Thank you. Are there any others, Ms. Mackey?
That was the only one we received.
Okay. Next is reports. I'd like to remind everybody that if you have a report, please contact Mr. Brown and Ms. Mackey so that when we're developing the agenda, that can be put on the agenda. I realize sometimes things come up at the last minute, but I want to see those on the agenda that we publish for the community. Mr. Brown, I'll turn the time over to you.
Okay, Mayor and Council. I guess basically for this, I'll bring it over to James with his reports.
So I've been asked to, Mayor and Council, I've been asked to present on three different issues tonight. The first issue, if it pleases the Mayor, I'll start with, is the old U-Haul demolition. That was done without a permit. It did end up getting red-tagged, which caused the work to cease until a permit could be acquired. And that is important as part of the permit is to identify any hazardous substances that might be in that pile. And continued stirring of the pile causes, potentially causes stuff to become airborne and increases the public health risk. We did contact CID, and I checked with them on Monday. And we came up with a recommendation to contact the inspector and ask them to please let the pile be removed, and they can continue their enforcement action at will. But the pile needs to go, and it needs to go yesterday. As of today, they have returned to removing the pile. So I would assume they now have a permit. And the equipment was on site this evening, and the pile was about half gone about an hour, about two hours ago, when I got called. So I think it's important, and I want to reiterate to all the contractors and the public out there, anytime you're going to do construction, demolition, any type of work, contact community development and make sure you understand the rules, regulations, permits that are required or not required prior to doing any work. The sooner the better. We've had historic buildings get destroyed without permits. And that's a horrendous shame and a loss to the entire community. Please contact community development prior to doing any type of construction or demolition work. The next is the House on 12th. While it was demoed and removed in a very expeditious manner, it as well was not done in compliance. And there will be potentially enforcement action on that property as well. And so there's two examples right there. Had they just contacted us and let us know what their plans were, we could have had this done in a timely and efficient and safe manner, ensuring that we didn't spread any asbestos or lead or any of the hazardous materials you find in homes throughout neighborhoods. So are there any questions for me on those two projects before I take on the third? Seeing none. Alex saw that we had a really short agenda tonight, so he asked me to fix that. So I'm going to take a little bit of time, and I'm going to read a written response regarding the flag issue and the investigation that has been done. I think it's really, really important, especially in this day and age, to be very thorough on the town's response and citizens' understanding of both their rights and what good citizens just don't do. So I was assigned to address the complaints regarding the offensive flag being flown on Swan and 32nd Street. I did some research regarding the issue of profanity that is displayed in public as well as if the sign laws applied. This is not an issue that has isolated the Silver City, so there is some information available. In one particular municipality in another state, this particular flag was the questioned issue. The short answer is that other municipalities have determined the flag to be a protected freedom of speech right. I have not found that any municipality has forced the removal of offensive language on sign or flag or other display that did not incite harm upon any individual or group. I have spoken with the town attorney regarding this issue. He agrees that the offensive flag does not meet the criteria that is set by the Supreme Court for enforcement action. While the Supreme Court has established clearly what is allowed on signs, they have not been so clear on establishing criteria for a word or phrase to be determined profane and not protected by the Constitution. As we apply the sign ordinance to this issue, we have significant issues with enforcement. Reed versus the town of Gilbert, Arizona, et al., the Supreme Court made several determinations. Content-based laws target speech, hold on, let me back up, content-based laws targeting speech based on its communicative content, they are presumptively unconstitutional. The town of Silver City sign code is content-based in some ways and not in some ways. Laws that are content-based depend on the communicative content, and this is not constitutional. Laws that are based on the size of a sign with no regard to the content may be regulated. Government discrimination among viewpoints is a more blatant and egregious form of content discrimination. The town Gilbert, Arizona, has ample content-neutral options available to resolve problems with safety and aesthetics, including regulating size, building materials, lighting, moving parts, and portability. This case has established some very important guidelines for signs and thus forms of displaying a message that establishes what is constitutional and what is unconstitutional. In short, the town is limited to enforcement of signs, flag ordinances, that requires one to read the message upon the sign or flag to determine the legality of the object upon which a message is displayed. The town can enforce an ordinance that is based on safety, size, aesthetics, building material, lighting, moving parts, and portability. If the town were to ban the flag in question, we would be required to ban all flags that don't incite harm to others. You can't yell "fire" in a crowded movie theater, as it may cause harm to others. Yes, the current town of Silver City ordinance does contain sections that would not be determined constitutional as outlined in the Reed case. The town has not been able to enforce the unconstitutional sections of the current ordinance since the Reed case was determined. At some point, the town may choose to clean up the current sign ordinance and remove the unconstitutional portions and add to or amend the areas that are constitutional. Excuse me. While the town is sympathetic to the parties that express displeasure with the offensive flag, we find our hands tied to prevent us from impinging upon the party that is responsible for the flag's First Amendment rights. This is a little editorial, but I think it's important to state that while we have rights, we also have responsibilities that run with those rights. It is a responsibility of living in a civil society that we conduct ourselves in a civil manner as to not offend anyone else. This may be by offensive noises, signs, reckless driving, numerous other ways that people may act uncivil and disrespectful of others. And numerous parts of our code are just trying to gain civility in our community. And I'll stand for questions.
Questions? I have a question of Chief Portillo. Back in September and October during the general election campaigns, wasn't that similar to the approach you took for those community members who had the same language but directed to Trump?
Yes, we're advising the community that it falls under freedom of speech, First Amendment.
Okay, thank you. Any comments or questions?
Brief comment, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I just want to thank Mr. Marshall for going through those three things. I'm the one that requested it. And I did so today when I talked with Alex. I had been in communication with Alex and Mr. Marshall, and I believe the chief and Jamie Embeck about some of these issues and had gotten last week. And so forgive me for asking to have this done today, but I thought it to be important, given the number of phone calls that I received over the past week and the public input that was read out loud by Ms. Mackey earlier today, tonight. So thank you again.
I agree that all three issues were important. But I can update my agenda with just a phone call or a text message, even if it's at the last minute, so that I know what our agenda looks like.
I'll make sure that, or I'll work with Mr. Brown to make sure that if anything comes up, that you'll be able to update that. My apologies.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions of Mr. Marshall? Thank you, Mr. Marshall. You did a lot of research.
We have done a lot of research.
Mr. Brown?
That's it, Mayor.
Okay. All right. Next on the agenda that requires business, that requires action, and that doesn't require action. But the next agenda item, which is the last agenda item, is new business. And this is Mr. Brown's topic as well. Mr. Brown?
Okay, Mayor and Council. As you know, the town received $4 million for construction and $475,000 for plan and design of a new rec center. And as a condition of receiving that money, the town is to put an additional $4 million for construction of the rec center. And so when we did this, knowing that we're working on the rec center, we're also looking at some work at Goth Park and other projects such as the Rock House, the Little Walnut, the connection to the CDT. We worked and applied through the report, what's it called, Priscilla?
Community Enhancement Fund.
Yeah, Community Enhancement Fund. James is on the board. But through the So we applied for a master recreation plan so that we could identify the needs in the community creation as well as what we do currently have in the community so that we don't duplicate services. And so with that money, we contracted with Better Cities, who has been conducting the master plan for the last, I believe, four months. And as of this point, we're at the point of, we've taken in a lot of information, and we're at the point of starting to make some decisions as to what we might like to see in the master plan. Because we've actually also hired an architect who is going to start working on some preliminary work for us, so that way we can identify what our priorities are going to be for the recreation center. We're starting to look at cost issues. And so with that, at this point, I would like Ryan England to talk about what's been done today. And then we can talk a little bit more about what direction you guys might want us to go. I've also got some additional information that I'd like to talk about after Ryan.
Thank you, Alex. I hope you can now hear me. Priscilla, raise your hand if you can. You look too relaxed. Probably deserve it. Just want to say, first of all, we really are appreciative of the opportunity to work with the city. The main reason for that is as we've talked with dozens of you to see what wants to be done. It's amazing how consistent people are in their excitement about this rec center and how much they support it and are really willing to contribute their thoughts and ideas. And frankly, a lot of the thoughts and ideas are very consistent with each other. We've talked to already over 40 people in depth, and we've had, I think, Alex, sorry, Eric, I think the number was like 560 have responded to our online survey. So we're getting a really good sense of what people want, what they would like to have, and we're glad that the architects are coming on board to give us some ideas of what some of the modules might look like and how much they would cost. You have, I think, in the materials that were sent to you, a sense of the conclusions we've come to. We have $8 million to spend, and there may be more coming. That will probably not buy a large aquatic center, although that's the second most requested item by most of the people we've talked to. First, of course, is a basketball court. And the desire there is to have multiple courts with multiple uses, so they can be used with, say, nets dropping down to allow for pickleball, volleyball, indoor soccer, and so forth. The second thing is a number of rooms that could be used for multiple purposes, either dancing or arts. And we're quite interested in the fact that once we get through the main items that people want, there's a good balance between arts and culture and recreation and activities. So the architects now have all of that information in their hands, and they'll be doing some more work to fine-tune that, as Alex said. We're really grateful they've come on board. We've had, as I said, about 40 interviews with detailed conversations with folks. We've had the several hundred online. We've also had a good focus group with a group of youth who talked to us in depth about what they're looking for, which we had some surprises there. One thing they're looking for is to get out of school, but they like it as close by so they can. And they would like to have tutors in a room they can play, work with a computer, or Wi-Fi and things. They just kind of want to get some variety, but they're really anxious to have a rec center nearby where they can do some recreation as well as studying after school. There's a third area they got into, which is they're really hoping that this will help employ a lot of the young people in the community, not only college students, but perhaps some of the later teens as well. So there's a lot of excitement about this, and we believe that what we're seeing is definitely possible. Not all at once, however. So the idea is to decide over years, what can we do now? In a few years, when we get more money, what can we do then and keep adding to it? And once we have the footprint for, say, 10 to 15 years out, we'll kind of know where we can place it. There are a number of ideas we've had about where it can be low There are a number of ideas we've had about, uh, where it can be located, but that hasn't been determined yet at all. Mayor has, has very clearly indicated we need to be looking out fifteen years rather than just a couple of years so that we know where we're going and whatever we build will last a long time and won't have to be redone. Mayor, uh, Mayor, is that pretty much what you said?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Uh, now for next steps, I'm going to turn the, the time over to Eric Gibson, my colleague, who's been polishing our, our deliverable report. We're, we're getting it in, in, in pretty good shape. Uh, it, it only lacks now the final pieces, which would be the architect's input and then deciding kind of where we're headed next after that, costing and so forth and selecting a location. But we're in really good shape right now to move forward. Eric?
Thank you, Ryan, and I'm, uh, very happy to see, uh, many of the council members again. It's been quite a while since I've been able to see you in person, so it's, it's a pleasure to, to see you again and I'm, I'm glad, uh, that we've been able to bring this project forward. Now that the architects have been hired on, we're going to be trying to work as closely as we can and, and potentially even refining our scope of work, um, just to make sure that we're not duplicating efforts and that we're really utilizing the skill sets of each of the contractors to the, the best of their abilities. But as Ryan mentioned, we have a couple items still remaining in the scope of work that we had with the, the town and we're just going to be now, uh, playing, uh, coordination and, and really helping to assist the architects as they complete their scope and make sure that this project is brought along and that it also has good alignment with economic development activities that are occurring around the community. Um, one of the other major components that we'll be conducting in the next several months is, is developing the branding and marketing strategy for the facility as it, uh, prepares into the next phase and as we, uh, kind of hone in around what is going to be the feature sets for the youth, the seniors and the veterans, um, which I know is a, a top priority for these dollars coming from the state. Uh, do you have any questions for us, council members?
I have a couple of questions.
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor? So I've, I'm sorry, I've scanned through the draft report and I didn't catch the ages of the youth focus groups. Could you tell me where those high schoolers or middle schoolers, about what age were those focus groups, the youth focus groups?
The answer is yes. We had a couple who were in, uh, they're like in middle school and, and all the way up to seniors and high school.
Okay.
A good balance. So we, we tried also to get at-risk youth. And so they had, uh, adults with them as well who are helping encourage them because as you know, when you ask a teenager, I've got several on my own who, and they're grown up now, when you say, "How are you doing?", it's just, "Fine."
Fine.
Nothing. You know, "What, which like in, in the rec center, uh, recreation?" We got past that eventually and they had a good time. So they, uh, we had a, and we'd like to have more of that, by the way. I think we need to have some more focus groups, but they're kind of hard to put together. You know, just because of the nature of, of having an old guy like me talking to young people on, on the phone, it's not something that, that comes across that well, so. But we've had some really, really good help in putting that together. Did that answer that question?
That was, that was great. Uh, the second question I have is, um, I know that there, when I looked at the variety of things that people have said that they would like to have, it was a large variety. Um, and I am just remembering a, um, years ago, when I lived in North Carolina, I used to go to a recreational area that was located near a lake and they actually had distributed things. They had a little small, uh, building that was dedicated to art and music and dance. Then they had, um, you know, other, the sports elsewhere. And so it wasn't all in one big complex. And I, I don't know if in your comparative benchmarking, how many, uh, complexes or recreation facilities do you have found that are more distributed rather than in, you know, one particular area? But I just want to ask if you-
I recall you mentioning that when we talked with you in your interview. So we, we blade that down as one of the options to consider. The main issue is cost, you know, what, where can you put the parking, the cost and so forth. Uh, but my sense is, as we begin looking at all of the many things we could do and decide on a center that will do the following, we can look all around the rest of the city. Uh, for example, we want the park to be, the, the rec center to be, uh, close to trails, for example. And we need to have it tied in with the rest of the parks. We've had some really good thoughts come out to how we can use Penny Park and Golf Park even better. And, you know, again, where it might be located would, would be, we're still thinking about that. But I, I would think, Linda, when you look in the future, you'll see a large rec center that has a lot of flexible space in it. It can be used for multiple activities and other things that we want to make sure get done in the community as well.
Okay, well, thank you. Thanks, guys.
Any other questions?
Um, I actually have one.
Councilor?
Um, when I read through your report, one of the things that did not come out at all was, um, accessibility. Accessibility for people who are mobility impaired.
Sorry, dude.
I, I'm not just saying I want people to be able to get in the building, but I would like them to also be able to use the building and to be something that's, you know, somewhere that they want to be too. And I think that's a group that you probably have forgotten at this point because I didn't see anything in that, that report about-
Could you repeat the first part? We didn't hear what you first said, so I don't know what group you're talking about.
Disabled people, people who can't walk, people in wheelchairs, people with walkers, people who have, uh, ment, uh, physical conditions that allow them not to be able to do things the same way.
That's an oversight, just in writing it up. We're definitely thinking about not just ADA access, but making sure that like the walking, we, we hope to talk about a walking, running and track that's capable for others as well indoors. So, yeah, we're definitely looking at that. And Eric, uh, well, now, now that he's hearing from that, we'll make sure that's reflected.
Oh, yeah. On your committee, if you'd like to have somebody who lived that life, you know, somebody who can actually give you pointers because if you don't live that life, you don't know how, how it is. Okay? Um, also with that, something to consider, even when you do, um, if you put bleachers to watch, uh, basketball and pickleball and whatever, remember that people in wheelchairs, people in walkers can't get in bleachers. So there needs to be space for that too. That's something that's been lacking in other, um, sports and recreation places around the community, not just town-owned, but also school and even. That's something that really needs to be better.
I think I caught most of what you're, you're getting at. The architects and their plans will be looking very closely at making sure that it is easy access and reasonable access, not just simply what's required by law. Uh, for example, you'll see a lot of ramps in use and so forth. It is, doesn't get, when you have only like a bis, basketball gym and you want to use all the space and occasionally bring out the bleachers, uh, there's only so many things we can do, but we need to focus on how to handle those who, uh, have walkers. I'm about to get in one of those myself in a few years, I think. So definitely want to do that. And I know that the architects have talked about just that issue. Uh, so thank you for bringing that up. We'll make sure that's in our report. I hope that helps, what a loop it.
And my other concern is, and I don't know what you're, you're planning as far as, you know, when you start working with the press and, and, and talking to the community a little bit more, but, you know, that was a, there are some pie in the sky ideas and they're great and I love that the community's so interested in all of these things. But at some point, maybe we need to be realistic and tell people, look, for eight million dollars, these are the things that can happen. These are the things we have to choose from. These are the things that have to wait. The people don't just assume, you know, oh, we're getting a rec center, that means we're getting all of these things that we want right now. Because people in Silver City tend to think they're going to get things tomorrow, even though the, you know, there's a process. So it might-
That's very wise.
To start using, you know, we have our reporter who's, our reporters, both of them actually are here listening, you know, maybe they can work together and write something or come up with something that, you know, so that people can start understanding that it's a process and it's going to take a while and we're not going to get everything at one time.
That's a strong point. We've tried to make that in all of our interviews, letting people know. And I've used the example of the aquatic center. There's some wonderful out there, but they're like twenty million dollars. And it may come in a coming year. I think as this rec center becomes more and more popular and successful, we'll be able to generate more funds. Uh, and that'd be a big hope for the future. But yes, we, we do need to be very clear. Dream all you want, folks, we'll try to get it done sometime, but now we've got eight million dollars and here's what we can do. And I think we can do a lot. You can probably have three basketball courts side by side and a lot of multipurpose rooms around that and a beautiful facade, lots of artwork and so forth for that much. The architects will be trying very hard to make sure that happens for us.
Yeah, and I would just add that there's going to be a, another community meeting, um, once we've gone through the process with the architects and we have a couple different design options available. And that would be the appropriate time to talk about the trade-offs, right? If we want to, if we want to include these features, then we will have to give up these other feature sets. Um, and that will also be included in part of that, that marketing and outreach strategy that we'll provide in the next phase of the document.
We've also tried to reach out to the whole county and making sure everybody in the county, including the mining district and others are included in what we're doing. We have a, a pretty good, uh, a pretty good sized steering committee, which look, has people from several different, uh, environments. Priscilla can probably tell you more about who's on the committee, but they're doing really well to help make sure that we're covering as many bases as possible and doing so realistically and not leaving anybody out.
And I'd just like to add a couple of comments, um, Lupin and members of the council, and, eh, is that, uh, one of the things that I want to ensure in part of the conversations, as you all are aware, there's like a different, there's a different, um, change in the, in state and federal as far as where the funding's coming from. We're seeing money that's coming through Land and Water Conservation Fund and now the state is actually divi, uh, developing a statewide outdoor recreation plan. And so we want to make sure that whatever we do, that, um, we're consistent and we're not duplicating, right? Because if, if there's something that's already being done elsewhere, there's no point in trying to duplicate that same effort and then let's expand or make best use of our dollars. On the, on the other hand, what I do want to say is that the money that has been invested, um, to do this plan and the, then the outcomes of what's coming from the assess, assessment is really going to help you in the sense that we're taking those same things that are coming out of this plan and we're going to embed them in the statewide outdoor recreation plan so that when, when they develop the state plan and you're all are applying for land and water conservation funds to enhance your, your outdoor recreational activities, you already have that in the plan. So you've been fortunate in that sense that you've been kind of doing double duty and actually enhancing the opportunities, not only from the recreation, but whether out, what other outdoor opportunities are there for this, these communities? And there's a big, uh, momentum, not only at the federal level, but at the state level. And you can see what we're doing here locally to try to diversify our own economy. So just be aware of that. And I would also say that if anybody knows anything about me, I'm a firm believer in that we need that public input because I think everybody needs to be represented and they have to be given the opportunity to really see what's out there. Because if you don't have that buy-in, then we really, the project never gets to where it needs to be because they felt like they were never validated and that they were excluded, right? And so, um, some of us are really fortunate of what we've had, uh, the ability to utilize and not, and others not so much. And I think those are also conversations that we have is that the, the ability to be able to use the facility, doesn't matter what income levels, what race, what gender, you know, what your likes, what your dislikes, it's about it being a universal facility for all people within the community. And I think that's your overarching goal for you as, as counselors, is that you want to make sure it's open for everybody, doesn't matter economically or not. It's neither here nor there. It's about a facility that's intended for everybody's use to maximize our efforts and what we want to see for our quality of place. So I hope that helps.
Yes. And, and then on, on top of that, you know, like, uh, Ryan and, and Eric have been talking about is that through these, uh, through this process, they've identified different modules that could possibly be included in the entire facility, recreation facility. And just as you said, Councilor Gunn, uh, we're limited on what we can have. We can't have everything, like you said, pie in the sky situation. So we know we've got eight million dollars right now. Uh, but, uh, one thing I did want to bring up to you today is that the university has proposed a partnership, uh, for the, in this process whereby, uh, the town would locate the rec center on university property. I believe it's where the old Echols Hall used to be. Uh, and then the university would, uh, would provide additional funding between four and I think eight million dollars maybe. So that would, that could increase the size of the project, uh, from eight to sixteen million dollars possibly. There would be some trade-offs though, in, in that we would partner, we wouldn't be able to run the facility by ourselves, be the sole decision makers. Uh, we would have to abide by, uh, the university's rules and such. Uh, we, we do, we are looking, but the Dr. Shepherd did propose a process by where if the partnership didn't work out, um, that, uh, say, for instance, if the town of Silver City, uh, was not happy with the partnership, uh, then there would be some language in the, the agreement whereby the university would have to pay the town the four million dollars that we put into the project. And we could be, we could remove ourselves from the, from the joint project. Uh, but, you know, that means we're going to lose the tip, the four million dollars that we've already put together, the four hundred and seventy, four point four seven five million that, uh, we've received from the state as well. But on the other hand, uh, the university could also buy out of the, of the project where if they chose to, we, we would have to, uh, pay them for what they've put in. My biggest concern about, about doing something like that is that the facility, although we both have the ability to buy out, uh, the facility would still be located on university property, even if we were the sole operators. And so, you know, there are some, a lot of positives and there are some negatives. And, um, you know, I would like to hear some, in, some feedback from, from the council at this point, so that way I, I have some sort of idea of the direction that, that we can, we would continue to, we would start to move.
Thank you. Let's have some discussion. Councilor Kano?
Okay, well, I've got a bunch of questions all at once out because of this. Um, well, the first thing that comes to mind is, um, Mr. England was talking about how the young people are talking about that they wanted a place that they could get to freely and that they could, you know, go to after school or whatever. Right now, we have a rec center no one uses, it's on a hill that's, people have to climb to get to. You put it where Echols was, you, you have it on the other side of town on a hill that no one can get to. So, you know, you, that's something to consider. The, the location is, is definitely an issue if it's where Echols is or was. Um, something else that comes to mind for me is, um, if it's jointly done with Western, then I'm going to assume it'll be like most other Western facilities, which means that Western students would get to use it for free. Does that mean we're going to have to charge community members to use it?
That's a question about that.
Is that going to be a, a problem for, you know, we're trying to, to help have everyone in the community be able to use it if our, our, um, our lower-income people aren't going to necessarily be able to afford to, you know, send their kids there if, if there, there's a huge fee. That's something to consider. Um, is this going to be something where student, university students are given priority for employment? Because then that kind of leaves out those high school students that we're thinking maybe seniors or juniors that might be looking for a job. There's a lot of things that come to mind when you, when you put Western into the mix and I would probably have a lot more questions as I think about it. So hopefully we'll continue to have this conversation.
Well, I, I appreciate that. Thank you for the information.
Mayor?
Councilor Gray?
Thank you, Mayor. I do have some concerns, especially if we're going to go with Western. And correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Brown? If this thing was to go into Western and one of us didn't like it, either it's Western or us didn't like it, and we have to pay them or they have to pay us, but us, us, facilities might be in Western's area. That is a, that'd be a, a drawback on Silver. It would be, it would harm Silver, in my opinion. And, and so if that was to happen, I would say not to go with Western, not to have Western in this, in this project here. Another thing is that if we're going to have something like this rec center here, we have to look at how much space is going to be required to have a lot of different things there. If we're going to do something like this, why not go all out and have a big thing? And maybe it'll take five years to do it, but, but why not? Why not include a lot of different things, a lot of things that benefit a lot of people from throughout the mining community? Also, who is in this committee? If, if you don't mind me asking, who is in this committee? If, if you don't mind me asking, who is in this committee? Can we have public meetings?
So Council, Council Ray and members of the council. So some of our committee, committee members include, and we try to do a diverse sector. So for example, we have Mario Quintana who's representing, representing the senior sector. We also have Dean Thompson. We have Paula Geiser, I think is her last name. We also have included Chon Fierro from, um, the mining district. Um, we have, I mean, with some other names, that's not remembering all the names. Um.
Mary Hotbed.
Very hot bed is on there. Um, and so what we try to do is make sure there was a broad selection of people to represent different sectors. And so again, it has really been my goal, um, to try to do that. Um, Gary Staley is another one. Um, but I will also say that even in my attempt, sometimes to reach out to these other outline communities, it's, it's not as easy as it, we would hope would it be, right? So we've invited them. That doesn't necessarily mean that they've accepted, right? So there also comes a point where we have to, uh, make a decision about how many committee members we can have. But I got to tell you that the committee members that we have currently are really just good members that are looking at everybody's best interest in making sure that we're doing what's the right thing for the entire county. Um, and they also understand that Silver City is a hub um, to this region. And what are those things that we could be looking at as well from creating some additional revenues for the city? Because I think we definitely are one of those areas that provides a service and programming for many um, various other programs and services. So, um, I think that at least from my perspective, that we have a great, um, we have a great crew that's been working. Um, and so that's been one of my, one of my goals also is to make sure that we have different focus groups so that we make sure we have that broad representation as well.
Priscilla, can I round out that list?
Absolutely.
List in front of me. Of course, you know, Priscilla's on the committee, as is Mayor Ladner and Alex Brown and James Marshall. Uh, additional Lieutenant Governor Morales is also on the list. He can't make all the meetings, so he has his daughter Elena, who's able to join us via Zoom. And she was, by the way, one of those on the focus group. And I think also you, we might mention that Bart Roselli, who's on the, on the, who directed the museum. I think Sherman Wade of, uh, Main Street. They've all been very interested and very active. There, we don't have any, anyone who slacks on this one. There's been a great committee.
I would like to see some ordinary people instead of people in politics. Personally, I'd like to see, see people like that. Diversity towards mining community. Get them involved. If they're going to support us, we have to support them also.
I could send you a list, uh, Council Ray of, of we, that's the other 40 people we've talked to. We've tried to get as many as possible, getting to real people who have real jobs, real concerns. I would talk to high school coaches, wrestling coaches. We talked to several people like that. We tried to be as broad as possible. And we've had several actually, when they read the, by the way, I forgot to mention that, uh, Lisa Jimenez, who is, uh, on the newspaper is also doing a lot of publicity for us. And because of her articles, I've had several people call me directly saying, I'm not on any committee, but I have an idea. And so we have a conversation and that goes into our, our record. So we're trying to do that. Brian, Brian. Yes, sir. Could you, could you put together a list of everybody who's involved? And, uh, so we can send it to all of the counselors, including me. I'm not sure I know everybody that's been involved. Will do. Yeah, I'll send it out tonight.
Council Ray, Council McConnell, do you have recommendations that you might be able to provide?
Yeah, I do. Why not, why not, why not ask counselors? We work for, for the public. Why not ask counselors?
It's a little bit hard having you guys on the steering committee when you're going to make the final decisions.
But I under, I understand that. I understand it, but we can also give it our input.
Yes, good.
I do have a few. I'll send those names to you, Mr. Brown, and then you can send them wherever they need to be.
Okay, I, I will do that. Thank you.
Yeah, if you have names, uh, give Alex a call or Priscilla. And we'll get them involved because when people call.
And if somebody really wants to be interviewed, um, you know, anybody that I know that wants to provide input, I, I send them over to Ryan. Ryan does a per, a one-on-one interview, which I think is good because he gets to have a little more in-depth detail. But, um, but I do believe that, you know, we have done a, an outstanding job in really getting the feedback. And then I think it's also very indicative of those people who responded to the surveys. And so, um, I feel at least from my part that I've gone above and beyond. And that's why we've had the juvenile justice focus groups. We've had the seniors. We've had, um, because remember that the funding and the way it was allocated in, in the language, it was for seniors, youth and veterans. And so we included veterans in that um, as well. That's not to say that not, we couldn't interview more people. I think that's always the possibility, but I think, um, anything that you can do to provide me some additional names, I'd be happy to. And as you all are aware, I try to do my very base, uh, my very best. I do have a plate full, I will say, but I, if anybody knows me, that I'm really looking at the overall bigger picture and for the entire county, that it benefits all populations. And that's my ultimate goal.
Any other discussion from, uh, Council Aman Smith?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, um, Mr. Brown, years ago, when I was a college professor, I used to teach entrepreneurship and management. And there's a real difference in, uh, design and creation and construction and then operation of a facility. And I, I just want to say that, um, listening to your short explanation and hearing, especially Counselor Conno's concern about, uh, people with disabilities climbing up a big hill, that is a big hill up there at, uh, near Eccles Hall. And Council raised concerns about regular people being able to use it. I, I, I guess that I would really prefer that we pursue the original vision of locating such a facility, or at least the first part, um, somewhere near Golf Park, near the trails. Uh, which is, has ample parking, is flat and, uh, is, you know, it seems to be more of a hub and accessibility. That's given scant information, but there's a, once a facility is built, then you've got to actually run it and run it well. And that's where perhaps my largest concern is, is a partnership and then how things might get run. So my two cents, uh, it's certainly not a decision. It's just information that I've taken in tonight and my reaction. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Council of Madison, do you have any, uh, input?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I really want to, uh, thank Council Orcano for bringing up, uh, one of the concerns that I was going to speak about, which was accessibility, um, for, um, individuals with a variety of disabilities to be able to use and enjoy the recreation facility, um, that may be built. Um, and I, I just, I think that when we look at it, it's, it's for all, all folks, um, as originally intended, and that means folks with different abilities. Um, I'd like to be able to see that if we do basketball courts, that, you know, it's a surface, um, wood, uh, I think is one of the ones that, um, or a court that's interchangeable, like many people have suggested in this, uh, report, that it's something that can be used for, uh, folks that, you know, um, are interested in playing, uh, basketball, um, uh, based on their various disabilities, for kids to be able to do things, to really encourage everyone in, in, um, Grant County to be able to use that facility when they're, um, in town and to be able to get to it. So, um, and to view other folks, um, playing sports. So I, I really want to thank Council Orcano for bringing that up. And, um, accessibility is the key in all, in, in all respects within the facility and, and getting to it. So, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Mayor Council.
Council Ray.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a question for, I have a phone from Mr. Ryan. Mr. Ryan, uh, is there a possibility that you may break down as to what people are looking at? Whether it be watches, whether it be basketball, just to get, just that we can get, the public can get a general idea of what could happen if was to, was to be done.
Will do then probably.
And, 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 uh, excuse, excuse me. And I know there's a lot of things that people are asking. But if you could give us a breakdown, if possible, if, if it's too much, don't, it's okay. I can talk to you later on.
We, we have a, a breakdown that I think that Alex will be, I'm sorry, Eric will be producing reports soon. That will show you the list of all the people we've interviewed. It'll show you what the online people said. We promised all the interviewees that they would be confidential about their particular interview. So we've synthesized it, but you'll get a good sense of what they've all said. And like I said, we have over 500 people have commented and I've listened all of those in the back in the appendix. So you'll be able to get a pretty, probably more than you want to know, but a, a good sense of the variety of opinions. But like, like I said, I'm excited by the fact that so many people are very interested in a court that has wood on it, that can be used for many different things. That we have, uh, we very concerned about making sure that the, those in lower income in our, in our, in our county and city are able to use the facility. Uh, you know, without having to pay a lot for it and yet still be able to operate it. So I think you'll see we've taught, we've really covered the base pretty broadly, I think. And I've been very excited that it's not a lot of, uh, I'm, I'm not going crazy on this one. This is fun.
Okay, okay.
You got a fun, you, a town is more fun than you know.
What about location? Can you break that, that down also?
I'll, I'll defer to Alex on that one.
I'm going to put you in a spot, Mr. Brown.
Well, we, we've got to identify the footprint to identify locations in town that actually will hold the, the facility is the first thing we better do. But we are talking and looking at different, uh, locations. So, and, and with that, um, I, I just, just for your information, I, I'll take the information that uh, the comments and the information that was, was given to you tonight and have some conversations with the university and see if, if we can get some answers and clear, clear things up and see if, uh, it is still, uh, still an option or opportunity for us to move forward with, with them or not. So we'll see in that. Uh, but one more thing that I, I did want to talk about real quick was, um, you know, we, we, we still are getting input, uh, on this process from other entities. And I believe, uh, James and the Trails and Open Space Committee had some, some comments. James?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Um, while this is going on, there's, there's some other stuff going on that's um, also supports recreation. Um, soon we'll, we'll have additional pickleball courts. They're going to be struck very soon. We're working on the lighting for those. And in the Trails Committee, there was a discussion that we recently purchased the, um, old personal site. And in attendance tonight, you'll see Alicia and Jeff Cram. They have done extensive work in putting together the Disc Golf community. And they have a petition online where they've gathered 599 signatures as of the beginning of this meeting to support Disc Golf. And they've, they're requesting that they be able to put up a, a course at the old personnel site. And the Trails Committee definitely supported that. Um, I think it's, it's a great thing. They've gone out and they've found whole sponsors. I don't know if you call them a hole. It's a basket. They found basket sponsors and they've, they've done a tremendous amount of work, um, prior to approaching the town. And I, I think it will be a great asset to the town to, um, support our outdoor recreation that we're enhancing. And they are in attendance tonight.
So, and, and that is something that we can actually do fairly easily, that we won't have to to go through some major processes of financing, like finding land. I think we have everything in place. So we can just work on, on getting that in place, uh, hopefully here in the near future. Uh, so, and, and that is the big benefit of the Recreation Master Plan is that we've identified a lot of other activities that may not necessarily fit within the, the rec center itself, but, uh, there are, uh, you know, for, I know that a splash park and stuff like that, that stuff that we might be able to put at the golf park expansion or, or even at Penny Park because of that new lot that we bought, uh, this last year. So, um, you know, there are a lot of opportunities that we, we can, we can work on outside of the rec center to enhance the quality of life, uh, in our community. And, uh, you know, it's sort of my intention to take advantage of everything we possibly can.
Council of Madison?
Thank you, Eric. Just a quick question, um, for Mr. England. Um, perhaps it's because I skimmed it so quickly, but the draft report that you provided to us is, um, I know that, uh, there have been 550 people that responded online to the survey. Is that online survey still open or is it now closed?
It's still open. We, openness is something like, like Priscilla said, we're really trying to make sure it happens. It's still open. In fact, I think we've got 10 more since that was printed.
So we can encourage folks, um, Lisa does a good job of writing up those articles to encourage folks to please, um, if, if, if you can do that online facility, uh, uh, the online, um, survey. What happens if, uh, they don't have access to an online method to do that? Is there any option for them to call someone to, to complete a survey?
Yep, they can call me. And I've had probably five or six that have called and they've given me some other names that I've called then also.
Okay, that's great. So, and, and they could call Priscilla to then hand them off to you as well then? Okay.
And by the way, Mr. England is my dad and he died with title, so I'm just playing old Ryan.
Okay, I can, I can call you Mr. Ryan. Cause like Council Ray, it's very formal.
Mr. died with him too.
Thank you very much, Mayor.
Thank you. Any other comment, discussion? Alex, you want to finish us up then?
No, I, I, just like I said, uh, during the, during these discussions, um, I really appreciate all the input that the council has given, um, you know, uh, if you come, like we discussed, any names, anybody that you want to have make some input, get in touch with, cut, touch with us. And we'll make sure that we talk with them and get their input and try to work with them as best as possible. Um, I will be coming more often to, to give you more updates as we, as we move through this process. And, um, with that, um, thank you.
Thank you. We'd also, Ryan?
One, one, one more comment.
Oh, Councilor Ray, okay.
Mr. Ryan.
Yes, sir.
May I have your phone number, please?
Eight oh one. Six oh two. Three five six five.
Three five six five?
Three five six five, yep. And if, if that doesn't work, call, call Priscilla. She's got it for sure.
No, I'm going to call Alex.
I have my brand new phone too. My kid's got me, so it works.
Okay. Thank you, sir. I appreciate that.
Okay, thank you. Want to thank, uh, Ryan and Priscilla and Eric. Also James and, and Alex for all of your work and keeping this organized and moving forward. Any other comments before we quit? Okay. Um, this concludes the business of the town of Silver City. Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilor Ray.
God bless America. And let's keep our amendments safe. Let's go by the Constitution of the United States. With that, I make a motion to adjourn.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Mr. Mayor.
Council Aman Smith.
Second that motion.
Thank you. A motion and a second. Any further discussion or comments? Roll call please, Ms. Mackey.
Councilor Madison?
Council Madison, aye.
Councilor Aman Smith.
Council Aman Smith, aye. Councilor Ammon Smith, aye.
Councilor Ray?
Aye.
Councilor Canno?
Councilor Canno, aye.
Thank you. Motion carries unanimously. We are hereby adjourned.